Article three, if anyone wants to debate one of the listed articles of the Finance Committee's about the live course, call out hold when the Finance Committee calls that number. We will then go and vote the entire article except for the holds, and then we will begin with the holds. Okay? And just go close, everybody has a minute to... Call out nice and loud so I can hear it. Thank you. All right, so Article three, what does the Finance Committee... Mr. Andrews?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town approve the salaries of elected officials for July 1st, 2015 to June 30th, 2016. Moderator, $200. Town clerk, $47,790.
Hold.
Hold.
Selectmen each, $1,500. Treasurer collector, $65,498. Assessors each, $1,500. Highway surveyor, $69,486.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we will vote on the salaries except for the town clerk salary. So that is, the motion on the floor right now is the moderator, $200. Selectmen, $1,500 each. Treasurer collector, $65,498. Assessors, $1,500 each. Highway surveyor, $69,486. It's your motion, Mr. Andrews, if you want to speak to it.
Mr. Moderator, these are the salaries included with a 1% raise, not including the moderator, town clerk, selectmen, and assessors.
Okay, any discussion on the Article three, except for the town clerk, which we'll take up separately? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of the amounts as proposed by the Finance Committee say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. We'll now take up the town clerk, $47,790. And we had a hold on that, so it was... Who raised the hold? Who wants to... Any discussion on that number? Yes, ma'am? Please punch the microphone.
Uh, we're quoting 46 McCollum Road. I just feel that increase in salary at this time, watching Finance Committee meetings and how tight all the budgets are, seems to be a lot, and if we're level funding departments, I just feel like it's a really big jump in salary.
Okay. Finance Committee, do you want to address the question?
Mr. Moderator? Yes, there are exceptions with the town clerk. We decided that it was time Halifax had a town clerk in the town hall for four days a week while the town hall was open, so that when people came in, they could deal with the town clerk instead of her assistant. And in looking at what other towns outside school, or the towns that we get ourselves with, they have a full-time town clerk. And we thought, even though we can't go five days a week, we can go the four days in part of the town hall is open. And that's why I should have approved this increase.
Okay. Any further discussion on the town clerk's salary as proposed by the Finance Committee? Just Mr. Andrews?
I just want to make the town aware that this issue has come up for five years that I've been on the Finance Committee. It's come up a number of times, that the number of hours for this position have not been what the town clerk is putting in. The town clerk is there more than what the hours that she's being paid for. The number for last year was 24 hours. This year's number of hours is, we're asking you to fund it at 30 hours. We see the need for the amount of work that she's doing. She's always available. I think that because it's come up for every year that I've been on the Finance Committee, even if... I think it needs to be brought to the town meeting, to the people, and let them decide if they believe that, you know, if paying her for the number of hours that she's working is right.
Any further discussion? Yes, sir, Mrs. Long?
When I kind of stay late at work, I'm told that it's illegal for me to stay.
I should have asked you to... I should have asked you just to identify yourself for the class.
I'm sorry. Allison Long, Moncond Street.
Thank you.
I'm told that under state law, we must pay people when they are working. I think, I'm not opposed to people volunteering, actually. I do it a lot myself. But I think for us to take advantage of somebody who is taking care of the things that we need taken care of, and yet we're not going to pay her for those hours, that's not reasonable.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? Well, Mr. Conroy first, and then Mr. Ball.
Hi, Jason Conroy, 21 Moon Road. Two questions. The first is, how long ago did we hire a assistant for the town clerk?
What was that question?
How long ago? We had a... The town clerk has a full-time assistant, is that correct?
Well, I'll try and find out.
Yes.
Yes, we have a full-time assistant.
And when was that position created?
Year and a half ago.
Okay. So a year and a half ago, we created a full-time assistant to help, and that assistant was ... is hired, correct?
That's right.
That assistant is hired, is that correct?
Yes, works in the office currently.
And town clerk is an elected position?
Town clerk is an elected position.
Okay, so the people choose to go for this job, you know, to go for this job, and they do have a full-time assistant that we just put in for a year and... A year and a half ago, we gave you a full-time assistant. I know it's likely to do a lot of work, you know, you're paying $1,500. It's something that you go for, it's, you know, a job that you go for, and, you know, you know what the salary is. The workload should have been reduced with the addition of a full-time assistant, so it's my feeling that the raise is not warranted.
Hey, thank you. Uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Ball, do you guys hear me? I'll be saying... Mr. Sealer?
Mr. Moderator, I wanted to ask, through you to the town clerk, was there anybody in that office before the assistant town clerk was hired? Was this position or anything like it there before a year and a half ago, or did you just have a town clerk?
When I was elected six years ago, the town clerk's position was cut from the treasurer. It used to be town clerk, treasurer. And the positions were separated. At that time, the Finance Committee decided that the town clerk could work 24 hours, and there would be an administrative assistant within the office. That's how I kept it, and it was that way until a recent hire of July 2014, and started as administrative... No, excuse me, before that, started as administrative assistant, was promoted to assistant town clerk, worked 32 hours. The office is open 32 hours a week to the public. That's what we're considering, full-time.
Any further discussion on Article three, the town clerk as proposed by the Finance Committee? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Passed by the majority. We'll now move on to Article four. Article four is a budget article, and in order to... In order to do this the most efficient way, the way we've been doing it for the last several town meetings, again, I'll split this question so that we will deal with the various sections as they are printed, first section being general government, second section, public safety police, and so on, as we go down the list in the warrant. I also need to list for you the changes that the accountant has already calculated for the 1% increase since this budget doesn't propose those. And so what I do, when I go down the list, when I go... When I go down the list, anyone who wants to hold any topic for discussion, call out hold like we did on the last one. We will then vote on all the other items that are not held, and we have to discuss the ones that are on hold. So this is proposed by the Finance Committee. So, Mr. Andrews, will you make a motion to do Article four?
To determine what sums of money the town will raise in appropriations, including appropriations from available funds to defray charges and expenses to the town, including debts and interest.
Okay. Do we have a second? Motion and a second. So again, starting at general government, I'm going to read the following. Anyone who wants to hold, please yell out hold. Moderator, $200. Selectmen salary, $4,500. Town administrator's salary, $88,604. So, I'm sorry, $89,486, my apologies. Selectmen clerical, $73,126. Selectmen expense... Selectmen expense, $4,100. Law, $42,200. Town hall electricity, $14,900. Town reports, $5,700. Audit, $20,000. A is... Help me out there. A is from solid waste revenue. Finance committee clerical, $4,708.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
A is also from the water department as well.
Okay. Finance committee expense, $395. Accountant salary, $71,465. Accountant clerical, $47,503. Accountant expense, $1,625. Data processing, $70,760.
Hold.
Assessor appraiser principal salary, $64,468. Assessor clerical, $62,791. Assessors' expense, $13,750. Office machines expense, $7,500. Town... Treasurer clerical, $60,358. Treasurer expense, $6,500. Treasurer tax title, $2,500. Treasurer banking and payroll expense, $6,200. Clerk salary, $47,790. Clerk clerical, $32,975. Clerk expense, $5,370. Elections and registrations, $12,940. Treasurer collector's salary, $65,498. Collector clerical, $63,875. Collector expense, $14,850. Waging personnel clerical, $4,892. Waging personnel expense, $250. Recruitment and employment costs, $7,500. Conservation commission expenses, $1,225. Conservation agent, zero. Planning board expense, $2,109. Board of appeals expense, $825. Regulatory clerical, $70,191. Building committee clerical, $10,866. Town buildings custodial, $166,640. Town building expense, $30,850. Town buildings preventative maintenance, $43,240. Town buildings snow and ice expense, $3,000. Total government will be $1,264,535. The only hold that I have is on line item number 15, data processing. As to all of the other line items in general government, is there any discussion?
Second. I have a second.
What?
Do you need a second?
Uh, here we have a motion, a second. Okay, all those in favor of the general government through line item 44, with the exception of data processing, line item 15, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Moving then to line item number 15, data processing. Somebody call a hold? Yes, sir?
Paul McPatty, 16 Moncond Street. I was just wondering if that $10,000 increase, including that salary position we're just talking about, when we did a processing, or how that's working?
Okay, just to see what...
Yes, $70,000 budget does include the 20-hour per week position.
Okay. Any further discussion on item... Line item number 15 in general government? Yes, sir, Mr. Conroy?
The position we created was to save the town money, our expenses are now on a whole $10,000.
Mr. Sealer?
The primary reason for the position was to have so much to save the town money is to make sure that we had someone available when we had things happen over here or in the various buildings. I think in the long run, we'll save money because we can devote more to the budget to the other agents, because this budget covers the cost of financial software for the various town departments inside the town hall, covers the new hardware and software we have costly purchased as the computer's age. We have to pay the bills for Comcast, for the highway department, council maintenance in town hall, mention the technician. We also have software, for instance, for doing backup on a daily basis, the environment software and other costs that we have. I think the reason for having somebody there is to make sure that we're doing everything correctly, not as much as it is for saving money. You can always save money, but that doesn't necessarily mean that you're doing things properly.
Any further discussion on line item 15? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of line item 15 at $70,760, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. We'll now move on to public safety police. Starting with line item number 45. Police chief salary, $100,629. Police wages, $938,758. Police training, $8,700. Police clerical, $43,462. Police expense, $62,485. Police station electricity, $24,100. Police cruiser maintenance, $14,000. Total public safety police, $1,192,134. I don't hear any holds on any of those line items. Any discussion? Yes, sir?
I just wanted to know if $14,000 is enough for vehicle maintenance?
You have to come up to the microphone. We... I know it's a pain to do that, so we have to keep a record, and we have to do this order.
Hi, Don Shively, my video former partner. I was wondering if $14,000 is enough for vehicle maintenance?
We're gonna find out.
For vehicles?
Yeah, the police chief is coming right up here to answer that question. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, as of right now, yes, that amount covers what we need for maintenance, as long as everything is status quo with our cars, as long as we stick with the capital plan and what we have in place. So, okay? Right now, yes.
Thank you. Any further discussion on items number 45 through 51, police public safety? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Moving on to public safety fire, starting with line item number 52. Fire chief salary, $101,664. Fire clerical, $39,369. Fire wages, $588,464. Fire retainers incentives, zero. Fire training, $57,677. Fire expense, $30,000. Fire station maintenance, $13,533. Fire vehicle equipment maintenance, $24,065. Ambulance supplies, $20,000. Ambulance billing, rather, $7,500. Total on public safety fire, $882,272. I don't hear any holds on any of that, is there any discussion? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that?
I have.
You had a hold. What number did you have a hold on?
54.
54.
54.
Fire wages? You have to yell loud, because I can't... I can't always hear you. All right, so I have a hold on number 54, line item 54. No holds on any of the others. All those in favor of public safety fire, except for line item 54, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. And I have a hold on 54, you want to come up?
Jared Small, Lawrence Road. Are fire wages part of the 1% increase? Or are they under separate...
I'm sorry, ask that question again?
Are fire wages under the 1% increase or the separate increase?
Uh, that's contractual, but we can ask the Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, you'll see that the union collective bargaining changes will happen for later articles. So Article nine through Article 13 is where you'll be hoping to see the 1% increase there.
Mr. Sealer?
And also, just to over... The part that requires to impose both of union members and the waging personnel employees. So the increase that you see in there for the 1%, it's for the call firefighters who are under waging personnel, not in the union. As the previous speaker mentioned, the union members will be covered whether the town wants to vote yes or no in the subsequent article.
Okay. Any other questions on line item number 54? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of line item 54 presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Moving on to public safety, other public safeties, which starts at line item number 62. Emergency management expenses, $1,545. Building inspector wages, $58,816. Building inspector assistant wages, $2,032. Building inspector expense, $4,750. Sealer of weights and measures salary, $2,467. Sealer of weights and measures expenses, $612. Dog officer salary, $17,078, and that's from B.
Something in the dog fund?
The dog fund, thank you. Dog officer expense, $4,616. That's also from B. Did I say on dog officer staff, $17,078, right?
Yes.
Okay. For total public safety other, $91,916. I don't hear any holds on any of those. So, line items number 62 to 69, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Moving on to communications. Public safety communications, starting at line item number seven. Communications center wages, $282,470. Communications center clerical, zero. Communication center expenses, $3,000. Total for communications, $285,470. I don't hear any holds on any of that. All those in favor of line items 70 through 72, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Moving on to schools. Starting at line item number 74. Elementary school, $5,102,810. Educational education, $159,000. Special needs tuition, $1,443,583. Special needs transportation, excuse me, $445,847. Silver Lake assessment operating, $4,127,189. Hold. Hold on line item 78. Silver Lake assessment, $529,728. C, which is... C?
C. I think that's... Dead exclusion.
Dead exclusion, okay. So, we have a hold only on line item number 78, Silver Lake assessment operating. As to the other line items, 74 through 79, in schools, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimous. We'll now take up line item number 78, and I have a hold on Mr. Andrews.
Mr. Moderator, I just want to point out in this budget that the Silver Lake has passed, they're using, well, the previous budget used capital funds to pay the operating expense in the amount of $335,550. There's a reduction in the agreement of money that was used from Penderell when they left the union. There's an increase in tuition from the CTE, the CTE students. There's a decrease in special ed tuition received. There's also a decrease in the state aid to the amount of $133,257, and there's a decrease of $17,525 for regional transportation. You see an increase of net, $144,000 for solar net meter. So with this budget, you're seeing that the town of Halifax, although we have a decrease, we're signing on to all these increases that are happening. The state... The state, when it redid its budget numbers, found that Halifax was being overcharged according to the estimate that they have, we'd have a reduction of students, but the state's calculation determined that Halifax has spent more than it should on Silver Lake. So, that's why we see a reduction in the overall assessment. So, when you look at this increase for this year, you see that, oh, an overall increase to all three towns. The towns are being asked to make up the state aid difference. The towns are being asked to make up the one-time use money that was used before. Uh, the problem that I have with this budget is that it's not a sustainable budget. Fifty-six percent of the employees, uh, of the teachers at Silver Lake are receiving an over-six percent increase when you factor in the rates that they receive the next three years, including this year, because there's a four, a four-point-five percent increase when they change steps. So, no other, no other contract in town has that type of increase. I'd also like to point out that when you look at those increases year over year, it's just three hundred thousand dollars for just the teachers in, increases. When you look at the total number of money that the town will possibly be looking to appropriate, I believe that the town is looking at close to three hundred thousand dollars next year for our assessment increase. I'd like to point out to the town that probably two and a half next year will approximately be three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, when we're looking at this budget and we're asking to support this budget, I don't believe next year that the town will be able to afford the budget with what's currently being offered at Silver Lake. I believe that we need to vote no to this and ask them to reconsider what they have and make a sustainable budget for the town so that no major impacts that programs will happen. When this was first brought up, one of the first items, that one of the members from our town on Silver Lake brought up was to cut the extracurricular activities, which is sports. So, I just want to make everyone aware that next year, I don't believe this anyway that the town will be able to support, to afford what we currently are being asked to support this year.
I, I wasn't sure if you were speaking in favor or against.
I'm asking the town to vote no to this budget.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Baldwin?
Uh, yes, Jeff Baldwin, Green Bay Circle. Kind of in the same vein, in the special town meeting, we had an Article eleven, where we were asked to approve the transfer to the operating budget of a hundred and sixty thou- a hundred and sixty thousand dollars from a district's excess and deficiency budget, which I don't find listed in the budget that was printed at the beginning of the town meeting report. What I'd like to know is, how much additional money beyond what we just approved them spending, are they sitting on? And if they have substantial money, why isn't that being applied to either come back to us around our assessment or reducing this operating cost?
Okay, I'll see if I can get you an answer. This is the answer. Uh, again, mind you, identify yourself.
Cassandra Hanson, Silver Lake Regional School Committee.
Thank you.
The current balance in E and D, I believe, is about a million, two?
One million, ninety-two thousand dollars.
Okay, one million, ninety-two thousand? Okay, so how E and D works? When we end the year, just like the town does, any items that we don't, any money's not spent gets put into our E and D account. Silver Lake can keep up to five percent of their operating budget into, in E and D. The towns have asked us not to use E and D to fund operating expenses. We respect that. So, what we use E and D for is capital items, which there is a list on the table of the capital items we are requesting. The Pembroke money that is coming to Silver Lake is going to finish out the year for, this year, and it was going to go into E and D. Because that money will be over five percent, it will be coming back to the towns in the form of a reduced assessment. But that will not happen until the fall of this year.
Thank you. Any further discussion on line item seventy-eight? Yes, sir?
Mel Conroy, Seven Birch Road. Uh, Mr. Andrews, as the chairman of the finance committee, I'm guessing you have probably the best grasp as to what is financially responsible for the town of Halifax, um, in relation to this budget. Do you have a number that you feel we, as residents of the town, can, uh, support?
If you have a seat, please.
After looking at the budget, I believe the reduction of a hundred thousand dollars is what I, I would support. Right now, the, the budget is set to increase by six-point-three percent over the total town's assessments. Even though Halifax's assessment is decreasing, that's what I would support. I think that that's what the towns will be able to afford on an ongoing basis, looking at, in the total town assessments being the number that the budget, the Silver Lake votes on a budget, and then you have state aid that is used to reduce that budget. So, the le- the money that's left over is what the town's, total town assessment is left, then it is then divided out by a number of steps, which basically break down to Halifax being about thirty-three, thirty-four percent of the budget, when you look at the number. So, I, I believe that Silver Lake should only grow by two and a half to three and a half percent this year. So, if you reduce our assessment by a hundred thousand dollars, you would be reducing, uh, basically their budget by three hundred thousand dollars.
So, to be clear, um, that number would be four million, twenty-seven thousand, one eighty-nine? Just quickly, though. Four million, twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine. Yes? I move that we amend line seventy-eight to reading four million, twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine.
Hold on just a second. Four million, twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine. Do we have a second?
Second, second.
We have a motion and a second to amend line item seventy-eight to, to reflect four million, twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Mr. Conroy, it's your motion, would you like to speak for it?
I know Gordon is, uh, the liaison for the school department, has spent a lot of time, uh, working with them, um, trying to develop a budget that works with them. I've stayed in on a couple of finance meetings, um, where he has spoken with representatives from Silver Lake, um, I know he is very concerned for the people in town of Halifax to be able to do his job as the chair of the finance committee and to present a budget to the town that is responsible.
Okay, uh, finance committee's recommendation on the amendment.
So, the, the finance comit- finance committee recommends the, the amendment three to the law.
Okay, uh, open to discussion, uh, Mrs. Wong?
Just, uh, Allison Wong from Monmouth Street. Um, just a clarification, um, there was a reference that was kind of gone over rather quickly, uh, that the state has substantially reduced, uh, its share, uh, of the cost. Um, I've forgotten how much it was. Was that about a hundred thousand dollars? Or more?
Your question is, your question is state reduction on?
Yeah, on Silver Lake, and, um, is this expected for next year also? Or, I mean, are we having difficulty meeting the contractual obligations? After all, that's a negotiated, uh, agreement, um, because the state isn't, uh, coming up with the normal share.
Do you have a seat, I'll try and find an answer. Uh, Mr. Andrews?
Uh, to, to answer the question, so the, the total number of, of dollars coming back to the, the town before Silver Lake is higher than last year. What's happening is the expenses that the state takes out of the money before it gives us to it is growing faster. So, there's reductions in state aid that happen before the money comes back to the town, and that's growing faster than the number that the state is appropriating to the town.
So, how's that balance out?
Can't ask questions like that, you know better.
Sorry.
Why not ask another question? You guys do it, please.
Just to follow, so how's that balance out?
So, so what happens is the three towns have to make up the difference when that state aid is reduced.
Okay.
Okay.
So, the, the amount that I have covered is one hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
So, the hundred thousand that we are having to cut, if we follow what you're proposing, is essentially what the state is charging us more for that we don't have control over.
So, so that charge goes to all three towns, to Silver Lake as a whole?
But I, I also hear that you're saying we have a smaller portion of the students, so that hundred thousand will probably not be three hundred, it would be more likely four hundred thousand to be cut.
Uh, it would, it would approximately be a three hundred thousand dollar cut, and I also like to point out to the town that this is just a yes or a no vote to Silver Lake. If the town votes no to the Silver Lake number, if we vote this amendment tonight, the, the Silver Lake committee, if they receive two no votes, will have to have a meeting within thirty days and have to vote a budget. It doesn't have to be a new budget, they don't have to take the reduction, they can come back and vote the same exact budget. But the, the point is that this is a process. So, if the town votes this amended number, we would be looking at having another special town meeting.
Uh, let's see, uh, you guys haven't spoken yet. Uh, yes, ma'am, over here, and then there, and then Miss Smalling, and then back to Mrs. Hanson. All right, I have a hand in the back, too, just keep raising it, I'll get to it.
Hi, Father Hatch, uh, Silver Lake School Committee. I attended a finance committee meeting where you finalized the budget for the town, and the finance committee that night voted that we, that they would, um, support the budget and that we could afford it. Why the change of face now? Future years are future years. Can the town afford this budget this year that is less than the budget from last year?
We'll try to get you an answer, you have a seat. Uh, Mr. Andrews, can you answer that question?
So, the reason why I went up to the mic, was I was acting as a, a citizen here, not just as a member of the finance committee, but to answer the question, the town, yes, can the town raise taxes enough to support the number that's requested by Silver Lake? Yes. Can we afford it? Yes. But when you look at the long-term sustainability of Silver Lake, I am very much concerned about that. So, by voting no to the, if, if you agree with the amendment, you'd be voting to tell Silver Lake that they need to, what they can reduce in that budget.
Okay, uh, yes, sir. Yep?
Hi, Ron Missley, Green Bay Circle. I know it was already stated that, um, that the new contract with the teachers, um, is, um, is mandatory, is part of the negotiations, that cannot be cut. So, I'd like to ask some representatives of Silver Lake, we do have to cut that much out of the budget in practical terms, where's it going to be cut?
Okay, Mrs. Smalling, I think, had your hand up?
I can't answer that question, though.
Huh?
Does he want to answer his question first?
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I'm... Um, do we have an answer for that question? Why don't you come out and just make sure we're clear on the questions?
Uh, I was addressing it more towards some representatives of Silver Lake to ask, um, what will be actually cut, if you can't cut the way you...
Uh, we have Mr. Tuffy here, you want to address that, Mr. Tuffy?
Thank you, my name is John Tuffy, and I'm the superintendent of Silver Lake Regional School District. As we started this budget season, uh, we actually started with a higher budget and made a number of cuts along the way. The budget that we see before you today is, represents a two-point, uh, three percent increase, I think, over last year, I have to look at my notes. It is not a large increase when you look at year-over-year plan. This budget contains no new positions, no expanded positions, um, as we described as A-level service budget, what we did last year is what we hope to do next year. In making the cuts that we made to the budget to get where we are, um, we have gone through and eliminated, um, most of the stuff, as I sometimes call it, that's in the budget. That is to say, we have cut back on, on supplies, on textbooks, on maintenance, on all of those items. So, simply put, when we look to take out what will be, I trust us to answer this number, roughly three hundred thousand dollars out of this budget, we will be looking at taking three hundred thousand dollars for the most part out of salaries. We will be looking to make production of workers, um, leave positions unfilled if we get retirements, um, and as often happens in playoffs, uh, we will be eliminating the lowest-paid employees and then having to eliminate additional employees to pay for unemployment. The rule of thumb is for, for every two teachers that get laid off, the third teacher's laid off to pay for unemployment costs. So, those are the sorts of things we're looking at doing.
That answers a question, okay, thank you, Mr. Tuffy. Ms. Van.
Hi, Summer Chmally, I'm here at Pembroke. Uh, there was mention of the Pembroke settlement, can somebody just clarify where that money is going to go when it's settled?
Try and find out, uh, Mrs. Hanson, Mr. Tuffy, somebody?
Cassandra Hanson, Silver Lake School Committee. Um, it's actually not Silver Lake's decision what the town's going to do with the money, it's going to be a view of town meetings.
Oh, yeah, the question in the back, you know. Keep raising your hand and holler, and I'll get to it.
My name is Michael Martin, Fifty-Sixth Albana Road. I am a new resident to Halifax. I just bought my house on Albana Road one month ago, and one of the biggest reasons I bought my house was because of the schools within Halifax and Silver Lake High School. So, I ask that you support this budget so that future generations of children can have the same schooling that other children have had in this district. It's a wonderful school system, and I hope we will vote to support it.
Thank you, welcome to Halifax. You're in.
So, one, one of the issues when you look at the sustainability of this budget is that the use of this one-time money from E and D is going to dry up, and we're going to be going to try and supply money to Silver Lake for ongoing maintenance issues. The schools are approximately ten annual now, and we're going to have to start to invest money into capital expenditures. Right now, the way that we're going, the way this budget looks, for now to the future, the, the town's going to have to start to add more and more money to the Silver Lake portion of the budget. The portion, the percentage of the budget is going to continue to grow, because right now, when you look at the, the assessment that we have, there is no money going to the maintenance side of, of the capital items. When you look at the handout that they provided today, E and D is being used to provide funds for the maintenance of that, of two schools. That's only going to happen while the school has money in that E and D account. So, not only are we going to see the operations side of the budget continue to grow, we're going to also have to start to talk with money for maintenance of the, of the school. And I, I understand that that is not going to happen in the next year or two, but it's going to happen. So, when you look at the school budget growing, at least with the teachers' contracts of over three hundred thousand dollars, you're not looking at, um, insurance, uh, other costs of technology, anything. You're looking at spending two and a half percent of the total three towns assessments. How the money gets to be done changes from year to year. But when you look at that operating side of the budget, we're going to spend it. If you agree that two and a half percent is what the town can afford to increase the budget by, because that's what we're capped at, then I think you have to, you have to ask Silver Lake to make changes in the way that they're doing theirs.
Mr. Tuffey, you have a comment?
Just a couple of comments. Mr. Andrews has talked a lot about the three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars that was used last year in Silver Lake budget. And I'd like to set a point out, that those are one-time expenses, those are long-lived assets. It is the equivalent of the town saying, we're going to use free cash to pay for some items that aren't really an operating expense. So last year, we spent money on classroom computers, classroom computers that we keep for seven, eight years. Classroom projectors that were new to the building, they lasted between nine and eight years, and I expect the new ones will last between nine and eight years. We spent forty-five thousand dollars on a logging freezer that was installed in nineteen seventy-two when we built the, when we built the CTE section. We spent sixteen thousand dollars on a ride on the scrubber for cleaning floors. In case you wondered, if you take a full lap of Silver Lake, it's a quarter of a mile. We have a lot of, a lot of forest dust that needs to be cleaned. Those are items that aren't coming up again on our way. And those are not items that are related to salaries or progress. Those are the one-time expenses. You talked about maintenance. If you look at your, if you look at the budget, if you look at the town meeting warrant that was listed, you see three line items for budgets that are healthy. We take care of cleaning the school and doing the wiring repairs. The piece of footage you see in the back of the room is what Gordon was talking, Mr. Andrews was talking about. He mentioned items that were being purchased. The very first item that, the second item that you see is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to repair and to resurface the track. The track was installed ten years ago. When you put it in, we knew that we would have to do those sort of things. Spending that kind of money to repair and resurface the track should extend its life by another ten years. The cost of putting in that track from where it's been ten years ago is a seven-figure number. These are not maintenance items that come up every year. These are maintenance items that come up periodically. Most of the items that you see on this script are those sorts of items. And my suggestion is that you should not have to see them repeated again, not right away, but that will come up at some point in the future. Yes, and in fact, at a later time, you will be asked to consider stabilization plans so we can bank money for that. The point of this is, the kinds of uses that you're seeing E and D put to, E and D is the moral equivalent of free cash for regional school districts, are the same kinds of things that I hear being proposed on a regular basis at town meetings, including your town meetings. Items that do not repeat on a regular basis, items that surfaces can be disabled. Items that if we don't get them into the next budget, we still open the door, we still provide the progress. We still do the sorts of things to respect what your schools and that is provide instruction and teaching facilities.
Any further discussion on item seventy-eight, line item seventy-eight?
Paul Hanson, Fifty-Sixth St. Albana Road. Mr. Moderator, could you ask Mr. Andrews to stand up and microwaving speaking as a town person and excuse when he's being a finance committee member or a town person?
Mr. Andrews, if you may, comment now as an individual citizen. So identify yourself as?
Gordon Andrews, Forty-four Elm Street. So I agree that these items need to be done. I also agree that there's a source of funding to be used with that. But that source of funding is going to dry up. We have a list of items, I believe it was over two million dollars, that the building and grounds subcommittee is looking at. So we have, we have a list of items that need to be done to the school. We have a source of revenue to do them. But what I'm trying to point out is, if we can, we continue to do what we're doing, we're not going to be able to meet the needs of the building when those funds dry up. And when we talk, I've talked about the three thirty-five dollar, you watch the finance committee, I'm laying on the floor, talking about three thirty-five because my back hurts so much. But that three hundred and thirty-five dollars, three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars was used last year as a one-time source. This year, that money's being included in the budget as operating. So we had source of revenue for it last year. This year, the source of revenue for that same dollar amount, even though they're different items, is now coming out of the total town's assessment. The point that I'm trying to make is that it's an unsustainable budget going forward. Can the town afford it this year? Yes. The town votes for it this year? Great. But next year, you're going to be looking at major changes to Silver Lake. And the reason that I would support this amendment is that if we make small changes now, we won't be looking at major changes next year. Because I don't think the town will support an override if that need has still occurred.
Override hasn't been addressed, as you mentioned. So, Mrs. Hanson.
I believe the townspeople in all three towns should have a say in what kind of school system they have. And to oppose a cut to the budget at this late date, I think is unfair not only to the parents, but as to the communities as well. Because you know what? The schools are a big basis of what our communities are about. And the resale values of our home will be affected. We have already agreed to meet with the towns and have public discussions about fiscal sixty-seventeen's budget and discuss what kind of programs and what kinds of cuts we're going to make. You know, I was very surprised when you brought forward that amendment tonight, Mr. Gordon, and I'm disappointed.
Mr. Conroy.
Mel Conroy, Seven Birch Road. As a resident of the town, this is by forum to make amendments and use the democratic process to control how my taxpayer dollars are spent. Phil, for Mrs. Hanson to stand up here and say, to make an amendment at this late hour is unfair.
Mr. Conroy, I should not have allowed anyone to use names. I apologize for that. Please stick to the issues. If you want to reference the previous speaker, that's fine.
This is my forum to make amendments and see how my tax money is spent. I have made the amendment because I feel it's invested in the city of town.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Mr. move the amendment? All right, I'm getting a question, moved a question, but unless there is some interest in debating, we can move right to the amendment. So, Phil, the question now before the body is whether or not to amend number seventy-eight, line item seventy-eight Silver Lake assessment to the figure of four million twenty-seven thousand one hundred and eighty-nine dollars. All those in favor of amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Close?
No.
I'm going to have to call for a vote. That is the first motion I made. You can have the counters come up, please. Just so that everyone's clear when we take the next vote. If the amendment fails, the number goes back to the number that's in the book, and then we'll vote on that number. I need everyone to please be seated. Back there, please take a chair. Everybody take a chair. In the back, thank you. You have to sit on a chair so we can get an accurate count, please. All right, times are forward. Okay, all right. All those in favor of the amended figure, in favor of amending the figure to four million twenty-seven thousand one hundred and eighty-nine dollars on line item seventy-eight, who stand and remain standing? Okay, please be seated. All those opposed to amending the figure to four million twenty-seven thousand, who stand and remain standing? Thank you. Please be seated. Of those present and voting, seventy-one yes for amendment, thirty-three no, the motion passes. We now move to the amended figure on item number seventy-eight of four million twenty-seven thousand one hundred and eighty-nine dollars. No evidence of discussion. All those in favor of the amended figure say aye.
Aye.
Close?
No.
Passed by majority. Mr. Schlight? Yes, Mr. Schlight?
I'd like to make a motion. We continue this town meeting for?
Turn this to a time circuit tomorrow night at seven thirty?
Do the amendment. Do the amendment, of course. That's correct.
We usually do that by a lot. Mrs. Hanson.
I'd like to put the town meeting on notice that I will be pointing up this article for review consideration tomorrow.
Now, has been put on notice that item seventy-eight may be brought up for consideration at the next meeting, which is tomorrow night. All those in favor of the amendment to tomorrow night at seven thirty, say aye.
Aye.
Close? Yes, to that.